The board will get your dinner and we wanted to finish the CIP process so that because that is a non-action item on your agenda. So, we cut the last work session short because there were lots of questions. We want to be able to really exhaust the time that we have. So, we'll have a full hour. The president has requested an entire hour for that discussion so that questions could be asked and answered as the best we can. So, without further ado, I'm just going to share with the board, we have two very exciting programs coming forward. They are a cooperation amongst students, families, employees to bring forth to the school board two specialized programs into neighborhood schools for which ASD already supports and is delighted to have. And I'm sure you're going to be wowed by both of these groups. I certainly was and they presented, had a little bit of questions asked on one, on the IB due to the capital. But, and we've certainly, last year had some board testimony on the French immersion as well as many written letters. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Vinsec to share, I guess, another intro, but this is sure to be a delight. I'm excited about it.
I hope it's a delight for you. Thank you, President Marsette, members of the board, Superintendent Bishop, thank you for allowing an hour of your time, valuable time for this. So, tonight, we're presenting two alternative programs presented to the ASD tonight. And alternative programs are different. I just want to make sure because I know a lot of times you associate me with charter schools. They are different than charter schools. If the board does approve them, they become the full responsibility of Anchorage School District. They are not governed by a separate board. They're under the purview of the principal and the senior directors. So, if approved, any additional funding or professional development, that becomes the responsibility of the school district, even though the charters are also public schools, they can manage their funds a little differently. So, the first presentation is going to be for the French immersion program. That would be a school or program. It's a program within a school housed at O'Malley Elementary School with eventual plans for growth to Golden View and then to South High School. The proposal comes to us from a community group called the French Language Advocates of Anchorage who submitted their letter of intent in June and have been working with ASD administration, community members, and myself to move the application forward. Presenting tonight will be Anne Adesiak Andrew. She's the president of the French Language Advocates in Anchorage and her team. But before they present, I'd like to talk a little bit about the process. If we go to the next slide. Yes, so, so tonight, we're going to talk about the process and we'll have the team present their proposal and then we hope to have it open up to the board for questions. So, the process, School Board Policy 6181 .1 says that the superintendent has authorized a plan and implement alternative programs with the school board's approval. So, the application process involves a letter of intent getting to the superintendent by September 1st and then the application is submitted to us and vetted through an administrative review team, much like the charter schools. We get people from all the various different departments in the Anchorage School District to look it over. We then met with them on September 27th and our administrative review team gave feedback. Both the Inlet View IB and the O'Malley French Immersion were then able to make any changes they wish to their application. So, it's now up and forward to the school board for this work session and then we have it scheduled as a non-action item on November 5th and then as an action item on November 19th. So, with that, I'd like to invite Anne and her team up, if you will. And I will turn it over to Anne and allow you to introduce your team. Microphones have little button on them you've got to push.
Is that up here? Yeah. Test, yep, alright. Thank you. Thank you, Daryl, President Marsette, Superintendent Bishop, and members of the school board. Bonjour or bon après-midi. My name is Anne Adesiak Andrew and I'm here today representing the community group French Language Advocates Anchorage. It's my pleasure to introduce our two key players, our partners, Principal Kelly Egleton at O'Malley, whom you already know, and one of our parent activists, Christine Couturier. So, with that, I first want to thank the board as well as the administrative review team for the time you've spent, you personally, board members, this summer, meeting with us and giving your feedback on our idea and our proposal and then taking the time to really seriously consider and review our proposal. And I want to thank both Brandon Locke, the World Languages Director, and Daryl Vinsec who have walked us through this process because when we first saw the list of letters A through W back in February, it was a little daunting, but I think we've made it. So, if we can get to our first slide for us, I'm going to give you a little history on this initiative. So, first, I have to invoke the spirit of Tam at this meeting because in 2006, Tam Augusta Geisler, Anchorage School District teacher Susan Oakley, Donna Logan, Dorina Montgomery, other parents, and myself worked to put together our French immersion program charter school at the same time as our linguistic hero, Joe Sanders, was doing the groundwork to launch Rilke Schula. Well, we know who won that event, not that it was a competition, but Rilke made it in that year, not just with a kindergarten program, but a K-8 charter school all at once. We weren't quite as mobilized and so we kind of recircled our wagons and tried again. So, let's fast forward to 2015 when FTE was actually approved by the school board to begin the curriculum work and development for both French and Chinese immersion programs. Unfortunately, due to the legislative cuts that year, Chinese was retained, but the French .5 position was eliminated and Chinese is now flourishing at Scenic Park. Next, we'll jump to 2017. The French government announced a suite of grants to support the French language and culture expansion in the United States in support of those programs. So, I started having conversations with Brandon and with Tam in November and December of last year after this announcement and they said, "Do you think we got the people? Do you think there's enough interest?" And I said, "Well, I don't know, let's have a meeting." And so, on January 29th, we did a community outreach meeting at Hantu and we had 60 parents show up on a dark cold winter night in January and we went, "Oh, my God, I guess maybe there's enough interest to run with this." And what was also really phenomenal at the end of that meeting is we were just asking if there was interest and Brandon had three parents come up that night, children in tow, ready to sign their kids up. And he said, "The program doesn't exist yet." And in later that week, he got two emails of resumes of teachers who were native speakers that were already credentialed and wanted to work for a school that didn't yet exist. So, we went, "Wow, this is quite some energy, we need to go with this." And thus, you heard our testimony back in February. So, we've been on a fast track ever since. Some people have called us, our movement, like a freight train. We prefer to refer to ourselves as a French Téche Vé, which is a high-speed bullet train, rather sleek, a little high-end. So, nonetheless, we are here. As we stated back in February, we bring to you a solution to a problem, looking at the waitlists for immersion programs, which last year were around 340 and for this year are around 150, bringing an immersion option to an area in the district in South Anchorage that currently doesn't have an option for that region, and then also bringing a special program or a magnet program to a school that is currently under-enrolled and this program would thereby boost its enrollment. And so, with that, I would like to introduce Christine and have her talk a little bit about why French, why French here.
Hi. So, French is spoken over 55 countries on five continents, so it's widely spread. Over 220 million people speak French all around the world and French has a long history as an international language in diplomacy, in commerce, in arts, and science. And there are already close to 200 immersion programs in the US. So, we're not the first one to start it, right? And on a more personal note beyond these very valid points, the opening of the French immersion school in Anchorage is also very important for me and for my family. I'm a mother of two and I have a five-year-old boy that's going to enter kindergarten next fall, so perfect. And he has a little sister who's 11 months and I hope she's going to follow that path too. And I also know firsthand the benefits of being bilingual. I'm a native French speaker. And now, I live here and I teach biology at UA. And being fluent in a second language has amazing consequences on the brain, its cognitive abilities, problem-solving, critical thinking, it's also open-minded, sorry, mind-opening. And I want that for my children. It would be an amazing opportunity. So, the second reason also why the opening of the French immersion school is important to me, I'm already trying to raise them, my children, also my husband, actually, but in a multicultural environment, so trying to teach them French and English, but also the culture associated to both languages. And so, opening the French immersion school in Anchorage would provide me as a parent all the tools and the resources to enhance my efforts. And when I talk about resources, I think about physical resources and educational tools, but it will also bring a community together around the school and the children. And I think that would help me most to have the help of that community. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to have Kelly talk about the building at O'Malley.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us today. So, O'Malley Elementary is a wonderful little neighborhood school tucked away up on the hillside, just right off of O'Malley. And we are currently populated with kiddos. We have about 292 and there is a capacity for 500 or so. At one point, O'Malley did have about 600 students with portables at one point way back when. So, we have started after-school French, which has been very popular. Last year, we had two sessions and we're back again, having an after-school session again. Would be wonderful to have evening sessions for parents as well. We have parents that have expressed interest in learning French along with their children. So, staff members are on board. We're excited to bring an immersion to O'Malley and serve the neighborhood of the hillside and get the neighborhood back, get the population back up at O'Malley. It's kind of a nice little tucked-away place up there and it's a very happy community and we would like to share that with the rest of Anchorage. And we have space, we have quite a few classrooms that are not being used for classrooms right now. We've enjoyed our space, we've kind of spread out, but we could definitely tuck back in. We have band and orchestra in sixth grade, so we've got space to expand and we're willing to do so and very excited for the opportunity. So, thank you.
I also want to share in terms of numbers because the devil is in the details and the numbers, that when we dug into the attendance data for the O'Malley area, last year it was 260, I think this year it's 245 students who are zoned for O'Malley that go elsewhere in ASD. So, that building that should hold 500, 550 kids, 250 kids are going elsewhere. And when we looked at where, we saw 50 to 60 of them are going to other immersion programs in the school district. The other students, you know, 190, 200 students are going to other charter and special programs. So, what this tells us about that community in the O'Malley zone area is that parents are looking for something, they're looking for an enrichment program. And if we have an opportunity to put an enrichment program at this school and they have room to house us, we believe that not only will that draw students back into this community school, but that we have an opportunity to invite some families back into the Anchorage School District, that there are going to be some homeschool students and perhaps even private school students who will think, "Wow, the opportunity to have a bilingual education is really worth it and I can do it in my local neighborhood public school." So, we think that's really powerful, both for drawing this community back together and attracting people back to their local neighborhood school and those playdates and, you know, the fun things with families and neighbors, but then also bringing kids back into ASD and that brings money back into the school district. For those of you especially fairly new to the school board, I want to point out something that's really unique about Anchorage. When I first started teaching for the district, gosh, it was about 15 years ago, I thought that all cities of a population of 350,000 had a ton of different immersion programs. And it was very eye-opening to me when I went to national conferences and found that other cities of our size have maybe two immersion programs and they're usually Spanish and English or maybe Spanish in one other language. And when you look here, we have seven and they're all different languages and that's rich. And it's not just K-6, it's K through 12. And the vast majority of immersion programs in the lower 48 end at sixth grade. And so, Anchorage is actually on the map nationally as being a pioneer and, you know, sort of an example for K-12 bilingual education. And that's pretty cool because we're out here. So, I just want to point that out and that there's this depth and breadth. And what we are proposing with our plan is not new. We are not starting completely over from scratch, but rather building on a model that is successful in this district for bilingual education and using ASD curriculum, but then also curriculum that is vetted and well-proven in French immersion schools across the country and really across five continents. And so, we feel like we have the perfect, I'm not even going to call it a storm, but a perfect alignment of stars in that we've got a school that has room for us, we have a community that would benefit from us being there and parents that want us, we have the French Embassy who has announced these grants to help support us as well as a slate of partnership services that is on the flyer I put before you. And we feel like, wow, this is really the time. And I will tell you, it wasn't without some consternation when Tam and Brandon and I were talking about, "Is this the time?" The budget's still not great and Juno hasn't been real nice to us the last number of years. And despite all of that, we have been writing grants. We got our first grant from the Alaska Community Foundation for $10,000 last month. Brandon and I are headed to Washington DC this weekend and we anticipate the award of another $10,000 grant. We've got $5,000 in parent and business matching pledges plus our fundraising money. We're two-thirds of the way to our $40,000 community, I guess, promise that we know that that's about what it's going to take to open a school and buy those materials. And so, I guess those efforts combined with the list of 71 parents that I provided you who have, just from a Google outreach survey, have said, "We want to sign up our kids." We share with you that there's definitely the energy and the interest to support a program like this and that, again, we feel that the Anchorage School District has the best model for success of what these programs should look like and that we would roll out each year, we would add a different grade level. And we're not trying to be the Germans, we're not going to do K-8 ones. We're going to start small and grow and have it be sustainable. And yes, we've communicated with Golden View and South and so they know it's coming their way. They've got a few years to prepare, but it is coming their way. Last slide. So, what I'd like to do, just to conclude our main points and then answer any questions you might have, is hit the evaluation criteria that are the ASD evaluation criteria for approving a program. We believe that we have demonstrated that there is a significant interest and a need to answer the number of students that are on the waitlist and parents who are frustrated at not being able to get their kids in an immersion program. We have a proposed site, they want us there. Kelly did a poll in the spring and I believe 75% of the staff was on board and ready to go with this and she even had some students, some teachers say, "I'll be the English partner teacher." So, that's a very good environment to go in, you don't want to go where you're not wanted. So, we feel good about that. We've been having meetings with their PTA and learning about how they do things because we definitely want it to be one school, we don't want it to be an us and them. Projected enrollment, so we're at 292 and we're going to add 50 kids a year. And so, realistically, the math says 350, but when you look at programs like Sand Lake, they really have about 300 in that program or so because of attrition. So, but we're going to fill the building so that they've got a fully funded school up there. Effect of the program on the site. So, it's going to get more crowded, but we think it's going to bring great energy and great community and more resources to that school, both in terms of FTE and dollars to the building, but also in terms of the partnership dollars that we're bringing from our group. And one of the resources, I mean, there are many from the embassy, but they find a teacher intern, a French teacher intern, and they take care of the visa requirements and the transportation to have that teacher come here. Our group provides a host family, a room, and then they, I think the embassy comes up with $400 or $500 a month and then we come up with matching funds. And so, that means each year, we can have a teacher intern, you know, be in our program. And so, that's leveraging, that's partnering and leveraging. We couldn't do that on our own. And so, I think that's a wonderful resource we can take advantage of. And they also have like artists in residence and other things that they can bring to the school that we envision sharing with the whole school and not just the French kids. Our group would also like to continue to support the after-school French program because that's been going on for seven, eight years and there's real interest. And we have some families who will have older children in the neighborhood program and their younger children in the French program and they want French for all their kids. Yes.
You need to have both and allow.
Okay, thank you. I do, I do. Staff, we've got four resumes already of French teachers and then I know that Kelly has some staff that is willing to partner. Costs and funding. So, in the proposal, I spent a fair amount of time on page 15 and 16 going through the budget and then also finding schools of comparable size with immersion programs in ASD to find what would a fully funded K through six building look like and what would that cost. And so, looking at Government Hill and I think it was Chugatch Elementary, I pulled out some others and I included in the proposal, that's from your 2018, 2019 budget, so you could see how many FTE, how much money is that going to be. And then I also dove into what our fundraising efforts are and what we think those expenses are going to pay for. And Brandon has been really helpful in getting us what those things are because of helping the Chinese and the UPIC programs get started. And so, he has been our expert there. I don't think I need to say much about viability of the program or academic benefit because ASD already supports seven fantastic, robust programs here. And with that, I will leave room for any questions.
Board members, do you have questions? Ms. Hildy.
Thank you for being here and I've just been so impressed by your group's organization and consistency and how you have drawn so much support, which if you could share that with all of us, that'd be great. But I just want to mention that today is Jo Saunders Tagg and this morning, I spent a lot of time reflecting on the impact she's had and seeing you here today and what you wish to do in our community is incredible. I do have a question on maintaining the quality of the program over the years as far as with the French Advocates of Anchorage and what role they'll have in the school or what that partnership might look like.
Thank you and thank you for mentioning this, Jo Saunders Tagg today, that's very special. Okay, so, the French Language Advocates, it's going to be up to our board what happens, whether this group ultimately becomes the French PTA group at that school, whether they continue to be another group that brings together the community. I think the community is going to rally around the school and that there's going to be, there'll be fundraisers, but there'll be student events and cultural events that'll happen around there. And so, after this initiative, after the first couple of years, I can't say exactly how that's going to happen, but the needs of the community and the parents in particular that are leading this are going to dictate what that looks like and whether it renames itself to another PTA. What I will tell you that we've seen in our current immersion programs is that parents buy in for 13 years. There is a stability that comes with these programs and so, you have leadership, you have a level of commitment that I feel. And I know we put on there that it's going to take about $25,000 a year for new materials for each grade level until we get through, you know, through the first time and then those become renewable supplies within the district. But I really feel like we have a gung-ho group, a committed group, and that that number is not insurmountable.
Ms. Holloman.
Yes, I was just curious, and I have to admit, not having another language, I don't understand it very well until I went out and saw some of it. But of the families that are on waitlist for other immersion programs, how many people do you see being willing? Is the mindset that they just want their kid in an immersion program or do they particularly want their kid in Chinese or Russian or?
I would defer that question to Brandon Locke. I think that some, I think that some parents specifically want one language, but other parents just want to be in any immersion program, but the percentage of those, I would have to defer to Brandon.
And I did want to add also that when I went to some of the culminating activities, as a board member, it was stunning to realize the bonding, as you say, that the parking lot may be kind of empty because everybody came in one car to the whole thing. These are families that know each other extraordinarily well, they are incredibly bonded to the school district and to their program. And the fact that this does rise up out of the community and it's in essence brought to the school district, I think is fantastic. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I have some questions, a couple here. I know that Bear Valley is also doing an after-school French, I don't know if it's a program, but I know that my grandson has participated. They've done it a couple of years, I'm not sure if they're going to do it again this year. Do you know if there are any other schools out there that are doing after-school French programs?
I don't know that there's any other French programs. I do know that one gal from our group is starting preschool out on base that is going to do French immersion and Spanish immersion preschool out on base because there are French-Canadian Air Guard families that are here and that meets a need for them. So, but I don't know of other schools that are doing it.
Okay. And then, do you know, I'm looking at your list here, do you know, are all these parents from O'Malley or do you know where their children, you know, what districts they're in now or where they would come from? in now or where they would come from?
I don't know. Our survey got names and email addresses and numbers of children, but not where they live. I do know that some of them are from O'Malley, but...
Okay. And then one last question, unless somebody else has a question, I'll let you go and then I'll ask mine later. Okay. How many classes do you envision starting out with this program?
So we know that we can open two full kindergarten classes. There are 39 people on our list right now, and we haven't even gone through the normal channels. However, when we asked in our survey if they had a kindergarten or if they had a first grader, would have a first grader next year, we have 33 parents on there that would have a first grader for next year. So we made no promises to the first grade parents, but we said if it were remotely possible, there would have to be 50 children ready to go. But given that you have the waitlists for the other programs, it could happen. And then the board and the school district would have to decide whether you would really, if you would do that or just do kindergarten.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I have one more. Do we know what the cost would be to the district yet or is that something you guys will provide later? Okay, okay.
It's in the proposal.
All right. Any other questions? I too am just, your group is amazing, but we just need to bottle that. Yeah, so definitely appreciate your time and coming this evening and presenting. Thank you.
Merci. Merci beaucoup.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite Patricia Arons from Inlet View, the principal of Inlet View, and her team to come on up. And I'll talk just to save time. So Inlet View is proposing a primary years international baccalaureate program would be located at Inlet View. It's currently a standalone program with, then students would feed into West High School. There has been some discussion about middle school, but that's something the board could explore as well. This proposal's coming to us from the principal and staff. And with that, I will turn it over to Principal Arons and let her present her proposal.
Just right there on the top, there's a button. There you go.
Good afternoon and to all the board members. And first of all, I want to thank Dr. Bishop and all the district for their support with our initiative, the school board for your time, listening to our proposal. My staff is here supporting us and our parents also, so I want to thank them for their support. This has been a journey. We've been working on this basically over a year and a half, just thinking about what is that that we want to do in our neighborhood school. So we've been working together with the parents, with our PTA, with our community, and with my staff. So I really want to thank them because this is something that is coming from them and for them and for our kids and our community. So in short words, our proposal is for Inlet View to be offering the international baccalaureate or what it's called, the primary years program for students in age kindergarten to sixth grade in our school. Currently, we, a little bit about the IB organization, there are more than 5,000 schools around the world that promote the IB framework. And in the United States, there are about 535 primary years program elementary schools that offer the program. So we are proposing to be the first IB PYP elementary school in the state of Alaska and just to be proud to be in Anchorage School District. So a little bit of information about the PYP. It's designed for students K6 and it focuses on the development of the whole child as an inquirer, both in the classroom and in the world outside. It's a framework guided by six transdisciplinary themes of global significance explored using knowledge and skills embedded in the six different subject areas, reading, math, social studies, science, physical education, art, music. So we are getting all the areas, all the subject areas, and we are working towards those big ideas with the transdisciplinary themes. And also talking about knowledge and skills that students will get through the development of units of inquiry. A little bit about the process, like I said at the beginning, was talking to our teachers and having those conversations with our staff. What is that that we want to do to continue offering to a neighborhood, continue to be our neighborhood school, continue to provide those opportunities for neighborhood students and for our community? What is that that we want to do that it's different and that we can still maintain our family-oriented and community-based school? So I would like to, we did a lot of our community work with staff and teachers, and I would like to maybe pass the microphone to my PTA president, Mrs. Julie, and she will talk about the process about getting the community and the parents involved. And I have my fourth grade teacher that she will be able to just share with you what, from the classroom perspective, what we are doing. When I started at Inlet View, I took the first year to kind of look and get to know my teachers. And from what I've seen and what they do, they are already doing pieces of IB. They are wonderful teachers, that they work really hard and they base all their units or their classes in their students. And the students are the ones that are guided their lessons. So it's really a wonderful opportunity for the kids. And so with that, that's when we came together and said, "We are already doing pieces of IB, so why don't we just keep working on this and become an IB school?" So I'm going to pass the microphone to Julie, and she will share with you what we have done as a community. Thank you.
Hi, just a short introduction. My name is Julie Lucky. I know I've met some of you in my actual work at the legislature, but for those of you that don't, this is what I do when I'm not in Juneau, is I am the PTA president for Inlet View Elementary. And I would say Inlet View really is a neighborhood community school. My kids started there the year before Patricia started as president, or as principal, sorry. And what I was struck by is a lot of the kindergartners, they do this, and I'll take just a moment of your time for this, the sixth graders at the end of the kindergarten year sing a little song to the sixth graders about a little seed and little cup and growing up. And often you see the moms seeing their very sixth graders singing that song to new kindergartners coming in. We are really a tight-knit community. I know a lot of the kids there. I know that my kids in kindergarten already think they know who their sixth grade teacher's going to be. It's a small school, not a lot of people to get to know, and we're fairly tight-knit that way. I will say my husband was an Inlet View graduate, and one of his teachers, Mr. Stevens, just retired after, I think, 31 years of service and actually taught my daughter for her first year. So what we have in Inlet View is a community of stability where the parents are involved, even though it's not a charter school, it is a neighborhood school. The teachers seem to want to stay. We have teachers retiring and not leaving our school for other reasons. We love our community. And when Mrs. Arons first talked about an IB, a lot of us were really skeptical about it. I will say, we, as the PTA, did a little poll ahead of time to find out what parents wanted. And one of the things that they did mention, and I know that you talked about that a little bit in the French immersion, was foreign language. So when Mrs. Arons came and she said, "Oh, I have this IB proposal," first of all, we said, "Well, why do we need new curriculum?" Because, you know, then our kids are going to go to Romeg and there's no IB, and then they'll go to West and it'll be really confusing for them. And what they said was, "Well, it's not a new curriculum. The kids will still learn everything that the school district has, they'll still take the same test." But what it is, is a different way for the children to access that. They call it a framework. It's just a different way to be involved in their learning. After we had more and more meetings, the parents became more and more supportive. We did a poll at the end of last year, which is the first time that we had Mrs. Arons do her presentations at the PTA meetings. And we had 86% of parents in support. Now, it's an unscientific poll, obviously not everybody wants to do a poll on May 25th after their kids just left school, but we do plan to do a little bit more polling and a little bit more parent integration to give you guys some better numbers before it comes up for a vote in November. What I have found is the more parents learn, the more they support. And as I said before, it's not a curriculum, so it will not be a hardship for the kids when they leave the elementary school to then move on to another school that might not have IB. It's basically an approach that we feel will benefit our students for years to come and get them interested and involved in learning, the inquiry-based approach, which I am not an expert in, but I know that we have teachers that have gone to lots of trainings and have learned a lot about this that can answer specific questions about that. It is really responsive to what the Inlet View parents want. The first was that it respect our school culture. One of the things the PTA tries to do at Inlet View is not leave any children without. So we pay for tutors. So if children maybe aren't quite at grade level, we want to bring those kids up to grade level. If kids maybe don't have enough money to go on a field trip or go to an event, we don't even ask any questions. The PTA sponsors all of those kids. Another thing that the kids do together is they go to a sixth grade camp every year, and we make sure that no kid, regardless of what their financial circumstances are, is left behind on that camp. So it is very important for us as a PTA to not have a school within our school. Our school is very small, it didn't fit our culture. And that was one thing that we said, either everybody's in or nobody's in or we won't support the program. And what we have learned is IB is great for gifted students, it's great for kids that maybe need a little bit of help catching up. It's really a framework that they can be a little bit more directed in their learning. And the teachers can work together, which they have collaboratively at IB. So we feel that, as we understand the program, it is a very good fit for the culture that our school already has. We appreciate the global perspective, the collaboration and involvement between the teachers working in teams, and then the children also learning to collaborate and work together. And it will have a foreign language component, which as I said, was the number one thing that when we asked our parents, the number one thing they wanted to see was a foreign language component. And in closing, I'll talk about how after we learned a little bit more about the IB program, the parents really stepped up. Now, for me personally, it won't help my kids all that much. My kids are a little bit older. My daughter, by the time the IB is fully implemented, will actually already be moving on to middle school. And my son is in second grade, so he'll get a couple of years of the full IB program because it does take a few years to get certified. However, the parents, especially the kindergartners, first graders, and even some of the sixth grade parents, even though their children would be leaving before we even got the approval at the school board, were willing to put up miles and some cash to send some of the teachers to training so that we could learn more about whether IB would be a good fit prior to the school administration coming in front of the school board. We felt we should put our money where our mouth was and send some of the teachers so they could come back and report to us really more about what IB was. So our hope as parents is that this IB program is so successful that other schools want to do it. We feel that Inlet View is a really good first look at IB, basically because our school is so small already. It's a neighborhood school, so all the kids would be involved. And we're kind of willing to be your guinea pigs to try this IB out and put a little bit of money into it and see if we can make it work at a small school. And hopefully, it may be something that Romeg then can take on or maybe some other elementary schools might be willing to try. Like I said, I don't have a lot of information about the IB specifics, but I can talk about the parent involvement and also about the culture and our willingness to work with the administration, to work out any kinks and get this program off the ground.
Hi, I'm Beth Daily-Gamble. I teach fourth grade at Inlet View. This is my eighth year teaching there. I've been teaching for 15 years, and this is the school where I'm going to stay. I know that for sure because it is such a strong, community-based school, parent-based, parent-supported school. And we have an amazing staff. As small as we are, we are very strong, and most of them are here in that row right there. We have 10 classrooms, and it's such an amazing school that it's more of a family, as cheesy as that sounds. But I do know most of the kindergartners and I'm a fourth grade teacher. They know who I am, they know my students in my classroom, and we work together. And that really is the center of IB. You know, the idea is to be community-based, you know, work together, collaborate as much as possible, and also go outside your building. There's this saying that we're going by where you think globally and you act locally. So with this international-mindedness that IB centers around, it's how can we basically make the world a better place? What can you as a kindergartner do as far as learning and enriching yourself so in your future you can make an impact? Because that is the IB program. It is impactful, it is inclusive of everybody, and it's the exposure and connections that you make through the IB framework that really carries a child through their life to make them as well-rounded as possible, as open-minded as possible. We have these little books for you that our Ignite teacher helped formulate, helped find. And it is kind of a background of what is the IB program because we know it can be confusing. I have to admit, when we first talked about IB, and Julie Lucky even admitted, they thought maybe it was another curriculum. It's not. It's a guidance, it's a framework, it's a way to guide you as a teacher, as the facilitator of learning, not the director necessarily, but the person that brings the kids together, exposes them to what they want to learn, but using the framework to guide you and the whole community to do so. And I just have to say, I've been implementing some of the ideas of IB in my class and my really large classroom of fourth graders, it's kind of amazing to see the relationships build from no matter where your background is because Inlet View is a very diverse school as far as economic status goes for these families. But it doesn't matter with IB. You know, you're a thinker, you're a doer, you're a compassionate person, and they're working together. We just made our own classroom constitution because the students, and this is IB for you, the students decided that the rules that were set for them on the board, you know, in any teacher's classroom, including my own, you know, were okay, but it didn't describe them fully. You know, they thought they needed to be a little more detailed, they needed to use their own language to explore that. So we decided to study the constitution, and it coincided with Constitution Day on the 17th. And we developed our own constitution, and all kids signed it, and they're proud of it. And as a teacher, I refer to it often, and they can even recite it themselves. And to me, that's miraculous, that's beautiful, and it brings a group of learners together so they respect each other, they respect their own learning, and they're excited and active to learn because really that's what it's all about, be an active learner and be excited for the new knowledge. I probably could go on forever, but maybe I shouldn't.
And just to kind of sum up before we are open for questions, I just wanted to emphasize and what we want to do, and yes, Inlet View is diverse. We have students that can have everything they want, and we also have students from low economic families. But what we want is that we want to be able to show those students and to have all the students and show them that window to the world. Just everybody will be the same, even though if they will never have the opportunity to leave Alaska, we want to give them the opportunity to see the world and talk about global issues and how can we act local. We've had examples of second grade teachers where the students come up with ideas to do something for our veterans. It's just coming from the student's idea. So that's the kind of thing that we want to do. In terms of staffing and money, there's a fee tied to the IB organization that we will have to pay annually and a fee for application that we can, it's on the application, it's in the whole proposal. And also as part of being international-mindedness, it also means being aware of other cultures and languages. And that's where the request for Spanish, in this case, Spanish teacher and someone that we'll work with in collaboration with all the teachers, that'll be the PYP coordinator.
And they have five minutes to ask questions.
Yes, so that's all, and then we are open for questions. Thank you very much.
Board members, have any questions? Ms. Hildy?
Mine's just limited funding, but first off, you guys are doing amazing and what a great thing to hear all these parents thinking deeply about education and coming together to find solutions and a path for their kids that they can be really excited and proud of. So thank you. On the funding, I guess, it's going to be till year three till it's fully implemented. But it talks about two teachers at 100, 200, you know, two teacher FTEs. Those would be in addition to your current Inlet View budget?
Yes, those will be one teacher for the language component and then one teacher that will work as the primary years coordinator, that person will work... that will work as the primary years coordinator, that person will work with the staff, with all the teachers, in helping them creating the units of inquiry, and developing our program of inquiry for the whole school. It's kind of a, we could call it like an instructional coach for the PYP program.
And how much would your PTA be expecting to plan to raise, or is he expecting it to come out of general fund, or, I don't know?
I don't know that we have proposed a particular budget at this time. The way the PTA has generally worked is, we helped to kind of come up with fundraisers to make up for a difference in cost or specific things. So, last year, when the IB program was presented to us, there needed to be a certain number of teachers trained to kind of get us off the ground, and so what we did was we committed to finding the funding to train, to send those teachers, because they had to go out of state for training, and one of them was in Canada, to come up with the money that was needed to get that training underway, and also for the travel expenses and any per diem that they needed. So, I think that would be once, hopefully, the school board is comfortable with the proposal, and then, once a funding stream is figured out by the school board, then we would go back to the PTA and see what we could do to augment any of the funding. We have had fairly successful fundraising in the past. I'm not sure we could commit to an annual amount, but that's something, you know, because we're only here for six years. So, or some of us have, you know, depending on the number of children, I guess, but that would be something that would have to be, just kind of once a budget comes down.
I would like to add that during the first year, the candidacy year, that's the first year where all the staff will be trained with a Level One workshop, and that is included in the application fee that we pay to the organization. So, they will send our, their representative, and they will come up to train all staff, and classified and certificated. So, that first level training will be done, and it's included in the application fee. After that, we will have to calibrate staff members, and that's when we will have to do some fundraising for, you know, send one or two teachers per year to continue getting the train, and maintain all the requirements from the IB organization.
Ms. McLeod.
So, it sounds like you anticipate needing the PYP position forever?
Yes, the PYP coordinator will be a staff member that will work, and will serve as the coordinator for the program for forever, yes.
Ms. Snellie.
Do I understand correctly that this is intended to be a school-wide IB program? And if you had a neighborhood kiddo, for any reason, wasn't able to participate in it, or didn't want to participate, what would their option be for it?
For any student that participates in the neighborhood, the student will be able to still, like I said, they will still have to, they will still be taught the ASD curriculum, so they will have access to the standards, and they will still have to do the testing and everything. It'll be just the framework where the teachers, the approach that the teachers will be doing. So, the student will be receiving the same curriculum that any other student from that grade level in any other school will receive.
And do we know when this is going to come before the school board for approval yet?
So, we have, not the fifth, I believe, the second meeting in November.
November 19th.
You'll have non-action on the fifth, and the second meeting in November, that date, that would be. And I just wanted to share, if you're familiar, I think you're going at understanding a child at high school, even, a school could be IB, but then some students go for the IB, you know, diploma, which then they would take additional assessments. The school-wide elementary program runs a little bit differently. They're not, it's different standards on both ends.
So, I guess I'm trying to understand a little bit, when we talk about the whole school, the neighborhood school being IB, is that a philosophy in how you're teaching? And so, I mean, that's kind of the way all our alternative programs are a little bit. I mean, I know some of the curriculum's different, too, but again, I'm a little concerned about if there was a neighborhood parent who was not, wanted to do this type of education, because we do have a school that has, is an alternative school and a neighborhood school, and we've had some parents express concern about that. So, I guess I'd want to know a little bit more, how that can differentiate between students, or what we're looking at exactly.
If I could answer to that? It can be very confusing, you know, is this a totally different program? And it's not. It's, like you said, it is a philosophy, and all the children are still doing district required curriculum. So, when a student comes in that door, they're still getting the lessons, they're still getting all the Go Math, all the Reach for Reading, and filling those statewide standard requirements. But it is a philosophy, it's more inquiry-based learning. So, a lot of the times, the students do, I would say, more STEM learning, where they are guiding pretty much what they would want to learn, and then the teacher is like the researcher that connects them, connects them to the resources, and connects them to, you know, the focus of where they want to head. So, you know, to answer to that, to a neighborhood kid coming in that school, it's still a neighborhood school, but it is, it's a different philosophy behind it, yeah.
So, I think at this time, in the interest of time, I do appreciate you guys coming in. Thank you for all your hard work, and your research, and thinking about your children, and what's best for them, and we are always thrilled as a board to hear these type of presentations, to give our children alternate programs. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we're having what I call the best part of our meeting, and that is recognizing students, staff, and community, and we have several presentations this evening, so I'll let Dr. Bishop take over.
Thank you, Madam President, and as folks gather their seats, I wanted to share that the two items of Focus on Staff and Students, one will be delivered by me, and one by our board president. There is no emergency, we're just going to honor some folks here in a minute, so. Everybody just, it'll be good. Yeah, yeah. Ladies and gentlemen, if this is your first opportunity to see a Focus on Staff and Students, I wanted to share that this portion of every board meeting is, was organized around the board wanting to celebrate those that make ASD great, and the people in our organization are, whom do that, which are our parents, our students, our staff, and our community members. We are a great school district because of the people in the school district. And so, today's 30-minute hiatus from all the paperwork, if you will, is to celebrate the people for what we do, what you do, what we do together. So, without further ado, I am going to share a little bit about Denali Montessori, its staff, the Anchorage Police Department, as well as the ASD team. And I'm going to call folks up, and if you can come up, I'll just share the story. So, from Denali Montessori is Principal Dean here. Is she, not sure if she's here. Lisera Espinoza Vargas, the kindergarten TA, is she available? Melissa Nazkiewicz, school psych. Alicia Woods. Helen O'Hara, teacher in charge. Felisa Woods. Jennifer Hazen. And Ed Piercing. I hope they did get the 5 o'clock start instead of 5:30. We'll have to ask Katie that. Okay, so they did. That's okay, because over to my left, we have the Anchorage Police Department, led by Chief Dahl and Deputy Chief Commanders, as well as SRO Ben Yun and officers. The ASD Crisis Team from the Security Department was Ashley Lally and Stephen Brown, and Maintenance and Operations were Kelly Crass and Rob Holland. If you're here, please all come forward. So, it looks like our security and firemen are here. I mean, oh, sorry, police. Rut row. Yeah. I know that the, is it the guns and hoses is pretty deep, so I'm sorry. As you know, and you may have seen on the news, an incident, an incident of violence occurred outside the building. And to give you a little story about that, it was a person inside the front office who heard something and thought, "That sounds like a gunshot," turned to someone in the office, and the secretary said, "A gunshot, and we have buttons that secure schools immediately." She hit that button, which set this all into motion, which was our Alice drill. And we practiced that, we practiced it twice a year at every school, and it's a process by which we just move into safety mode. We use what we're practicing, and Alice for us is alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate, but you can use any of those at any time which makes sense. And really, what that is about is empowering our students and our teachers to be safe, and to find cover, and make the best decisions they can. And I want to let you know that the best decisions were made that day at Denali Montessori. I wanted to share that the staff followed all drill protocols for active intruder, and stayed put with precision and focus. They are responsible for maintaining the safety of children throughout the incident, and of a shooting in the school parking lot that occurred October 3rd. The Anchorage Police Department responded within 90 seconds. SROs and officers from patrol and traffic divisions and officers came off ship, arriving in the parking lot to assist. Their quick response contained the altercation and helped keep Denali Montessori safe. School Resource Officer Ben Yun, he had efficient monitoring of the cameras, because of course, just so you know, all of our cameras that are digital are seen here, as well as at the police department, so they can identify safety concerns simultaneously. And he ensured that the grounds were safe. The Crisis Team of school psychologists were at Denali Montessori within a half an hour, and went into classrooms helping teachers and students. They were invaluable in helping ease the tension and anxiety. The Anchorage School District Security helped as a liaison between APD and the school, and they assisted with parent entry from the playground and at the front office due to increased traffic. And Mr. Eddie the BPO and ASD Maintenance and Operations worked tirelessly to get the school clean, in order for the students, staff, and family to re-enter. And it takes us all together as a community to make good things happen, and we are just so proud of our partners in the police department, as well as our school personnel in keeping kids safe, and we want to thank you. And Chief Dahl, do you have anything to say?
Thanks. So, thank you, Dr. Bishop. I appreciate the invitation to be here tonight. You know, I think this is a great example of a really quick response by the police department, and I'm just, I'm really pleased with all of our officers that arrived that day, and were able to secure the school so quickly. I can tell you that by the time I arrived at the scene, and was able to speak with the principal, she very much had her plan together, she was executing it, it was very organized, and I think that the work that happened there was very complimentary by both entities. And so, I just, I really appreciate the good partnership we have with the school district, and thank you for continuing that.
Thank you. And Paula Patterson is here with our Crisis Team. Would you like to come forward to share a little bit about, I should have had you on my list? So, we have expertise in the district that supports schools as well, and here's your certificate. Would you like to talk as well?
I just want to say that our Crisis Team is fabulous. As soon as we found out something was happening, we had our people over there right away, and they are a great group of school psychologists.
Thank you. And I would just want to say, officers and community, thank you so much. It was a good example of something good happening in our school district. Thank you. Something good out of something bad, so, thank you. Thank you very much, and we'll take a photo with you guys. All right. Thanks. 6:30, not 5:30, and, or 5 o'clock, and so, during our regular meeting, we can pop out and honor them. So, that was an error, so thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to Board President.
So, if I could have Connie O'Shamira and her assistant come forward, Claire. And Connie O'Shamira, I don't know if some of you know, she is the owner of Dwell Realty, and has become a very, well, a business partner, I will say, and she has taken upon herself to put, well, I'll let her talk about the program, but it sets an example for other businesses and community members, and things that you can do to help further education and support our students.
Thank you, Starr. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank all of the school administrators, and secretaries, principals, and teachers that allowed us to come into your school, and to work with everyone, to present these awards today. And a special thank you to Claire James, our marketing director, who helped put together over these 300 entries we had this year, about essays about why I love my home, and what is special about my home. As you know, we're a real estate brokerage selling primarily homes, but we also believe in public education, we also believe in the creative aspects of creative writing, and learning how to express ourselves through words. So, we have some winners today, and we hope that you're here, we look forward to it. So, first, we have an honorable mention for Charlize Golo Batwicke for art, and with her teacher, Christine Phillips. And I don't know if she's here today or not. Oh, I think here she comes. No. All right. Okay. Thank you very much. You wrote a, yes, all right. She did a beautiful watercolor of two swans on Taku Lake. Thank you very much. All right, so now, on to the winners. Weston Straight, teacher's Helen O'Hara. Please come forward. So, each winner receives $100, and their teacher also receives $100. So, if the teacher's here, please come forward as well. All right. The next winner is Meila Hodl, and her teachers are Linda Hewland and Matthew Crockett. Right, she is a second winner in a row. I do believe she may be a new poet. All right. All right. So, the next winner is Drew Congdon, and his teacher is Wayne Ashworth. Drew Congdon is, all right, is it, congratulations?
This actually goes to Patty Vanlet, Drew's Ignite teacher. She's the one that put her in for the writing.
All right, all right. Thank you, thank you. All right. The next winner is Charlotte Fontana. Linda Hewland and Matthew Crockett, one more time, please. All right. All right, the next winner is Madeline Davis, and Tammy Duff is the teacher. Our next winner is Kayden Campbell, and his teachers are Amanda Runkel and Alina Bojus. Please come forward. Oh, here he comes. All right. What, another winner, Angela Ruas-Rays. I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing that correctly. Please come forward, and her teacher is April Halpern. All right. And finally, the eighth winner is Jada Hall, and once again, Linda Hewlin and Matthew Crockett. All right. All right. Thank you very much, and we'll see you next year for the Third Annual Creative Writing Contest. Thank you.
And I just, oh, let's get a photo. Let's get a photo here, guys. Maybe over here. And I just want to say that I am very proud to work for Dwell in my other job, because we are such a supporter of our schools, so, thank you, Connie.
Would any student want to share what they're going to use their $100 for? Anyone? Do you have, do you know what you're going to do?
I was going to buy me tight shoes.
And now, board members will come back to the table very quickly, so we can adjourn into executive session. Oh, no, we're not going into executive session. Come back to the table, so we can have our presentation for, or CIP. Board members, you can actually go in and get something to eat and bring it back to the table, so that we'll be ready to hear the presentation.
Yeah, we're just going to bring, they're going to, they're going to, well, our board's going to vote on both, but then we're going to bring the bond forward in November, December, and then next calendar year, February, most likely, is when we'll come forward with the, uh, the six-year plan. All right. Thanks, Shannon. We'll stop. I mean, we're going to stop anyways, because, uh, we'll kind of turn into pumpkins. And then, if need be, Star, if need be, you know, if it's non-action, certainly poll, poll any memo during the meeting, and we can carry on any, any discussion if we don't get to.
Yes.
Yeah, it's part of Table Two. I've, I've got one, Katie. Thank you.
All right. So hopefully you guys won't mind us eating up here, and we'll, um, but we are very happy to have, um, Mr. Roth and Mr. Finisef, uh, do this presentation for us, because it's something that is, um, we always have a lot of questions about, and we want to have a thorough understanding, and so thank you for this presentation.
Thank, thank you, Madam President, through, uh, Dr. Bishop, uh, and members of the board. Thank, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, really, to continue a, a conversation that we began on the 24th of September at that work session. And, and just to briefly remind the board, at that meeting, the administration presented four recommendations, but we did not have sufficient time to complete the, the six-year capital improvement plan or the proposed 2019 bond proposition, which is also, uh, year one of the 2019, uh, plan, or the, correction, the six-year plan. I do want to first start, um, by stating each of you should have a product, uh, in front of you. It's, it's a 11-by-17, uh, draft six-year plan, and underneath that is Table Two, which is a more detailed description of the, of the projects that are, that are presented on that plan. Uh, we do have Mr. Shannon Bingham on the phone. I, I also want to identify, we've got principals from, from several schools, Service High School, Inlet View Elementary, Abbott Loop, Central Middle School, and Whaley School. Also Lisa Prince from Eagle River Elementary, representing the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. We also have instructional leaders, uh, in the room, so I, I, I think we can answer any questions, uh, that, that the board will have. So first, I, I just, I want to state upfront that, that, yeah, I and the planning team, you know, we, we acknowledge several factors. First, we, we understand the, the current enrollment trends, and we also acknowledge the state's moratorium on debt reimbursement through July 1st, 2020. Uh, I also want to state that the administration's recommendations through 2020 are informed by board guidance that was issued in March 2016, specifically that the district focus on a systemic reduction of deferred capital maintenance needs during this five-year moratorium. Also, while not directed, uh, I, I do want to note that the district has, uh, bonded in two years for an amount that was equal to or less than the, the bonded debt that the district retired that year. This, this strategy definitely has advantages at the polls, but it also has consequences to the district infrastructure. First, that the district's overall bond debt, uh, has been reduced approximately 237 million over the last 10 years. In the last five years, the district has reduced bond debt about 63 million. The result of this strategy really is a, is a fairly market expansion in the deferred capital maintenance that now exceeds half a billion dollars. The district has aged infrastructure. Uh, for example, of our six-year elementary schools, 14 were built in the 1950s, 15 were built in the 1960s. In terms of, uh, the, the agenda, I'll begin with the six-year capital improvement plan, and then, uh, both Tom and I will transition to a more detailed discussion of the proposed 2019, uh, bond proposition. I'll remind the, the members that this is a continuation of the discussion that we began on the 24th of September. These items are on the agenda this evening for non-action, and they will come before the board on the, uh, excuse me, the 5th of November for action. And as always, I will, I will pause during portions of the brief, uh, for, for comment and question, and to be sure throughout, we're, we're happy to entertain any questions during, during the presentation. I'll pause now if anyone has questions or comments.
Mr. Dahman?
What was that second number on debt reduction, the shorter time period?
Five, at five years, the district has reduced 62.9, or about 63 million dollars.
Thank you.
So, at this time, um, I'll ask, you can reference the 11-by-17 sheet. I'm going to refer to the, the chart on the, the screen, but I'd like to give you a quick orientation to this chart. This is our, our, our draft six-year capital improvement plan. So if you start in the upper-left corner, again, I'm, I'm referencing the, the chart that's on the screen. The first row depicts the calendar year, which also depicts the year of the bond, year one, two, three through six. Row two shows the anticipated debt that the district will, will retire by year. Row three demonstrates the proposed bond amount by year. Again, as mentioned earlier, year one represents what we are proposing to the school board for a 2019 bond proposition. As you continue down the chart, you'll, you'll observe there are three categories. Again, this is, this is on the, the chart that's depicted on the screen. The first category is for planning and design. The second category is specific to renovations or replacements, and then the third category is for deferred capital maintenance. Now, what you'll see on your chart, uh, as you look towards the bottom half of the 11-by-17 handout, those are the deferred requirements. In the upper portion, you'll see where it's either a, a proposed planning and design or renovation. So my intent is to briefly cover years one through six, and then Tom and I, again, will transition to a more detailed discussion of the 2019 projects. I do want to highlight several details. So to, to be sure, first off, th- this plan is based on facility condition indices of our infrastructure, but it also demonstrates a longer-range vision for the district. It is informed by instructional and programmatic factors, and the adequacy of some infrastructure to meet both current and future needs. So year, years one and two, these represent deferred maintenance bonds, which are consistent with the board guidance from March 2016. In short, these, these are primarily roof replacements, roof renovations, and boiler replacements. We also have, uh, in 2019, planning and design funding for the replacement of Abbott Loop Elementary and Inlet View Elementary. You'll also note throughout that we are factoring in planning and design monies for deferred capital maintenance projects in the following bond year. This is based on observations made in the previous year, that the, the rough-order magnitude estimates were not, uh, a, an accurate representation of what are actual costs, and that this design, uh, planning and design money in the year prior will get the district to a 35% design, uh, on these proposed projects, so that the numbers that are going forward on the bond proposition are based on a 35% design, and, and that gives us a much better, uh, sense for, uh, what the projects are going to cost.
Ms. Hildy?
On that, um, part of my concern is the design separated from the construction, right? It'd be really nice to pass a bond and say, and look, here's a, the result from it. Um, but you just mentioned the 35% design requirement gets us closer to an actual cost calculation. What is, so, what would the downside be of having them happen at the same time on a bond versus having the, the time difference between that 35% design plan? versus having the time difference between that 35% design plan?
Thank you, that's a great question. So the first thing I would offer, there is some risk in that if the district were to invest in planning and design in a given bond year, that were the district to come back at a later year, that that bond would not pass. So the district potentially has invested in planning and design that is not supported for actual construction by the public. There is a shelf life to design. I think estimate is about three to four years before you would need to do some updates. So that's one risk. The numbers that are provided, especially in year 1, 2019, again, these are rough order of magnitude numbers. They have been vetted. And I'll allow Mr. Fenicev to talk more details about what he and his staff have done to get to, I think is a fairly granular number that's being presented. But again, it's not based off an architectural design. It's based off of historical costs for like projects as well as, you know, what are some formulas that are provided to the district through deed and through VFA. So Tom, I'll pass to you.
Sure, so in order to assess where a project is and come up with a rough order of magnitude cost estimate, we first take a look at the numbers. We use a system called VFA. VFA tracks 26 different systems within the building and it assesses their condition. That gives us our FCI. But there are other factors that are involved. There's the... Of course. So that gives us the facilities condition index, which tells us the status of the particular system. Then we have the educational adequacy index. That tells us how well the building is meeting the needs of the educators to support the program. So we can combine those two and that gives us an overall ranking for when we should replace or it demonstrates the needs for those projects. So when it goes back to the planning and design, we use that design to refine the costs involved. So when we're ready to do a bond, we have a fairly good number in terms of what costs are associated with that project. So we're actually saving money by planning upfront and investing in that planning.
And if I might just offer, I think, I think there is a greater degree of confidence when the public, when we go to bond, that the amounts that we are requesting from the public to support, you know, we feel confident that those numbers are accurate. Again, they're based off of architecture, architectural designs and we get a much greater sense from just a project planning standpoint. We know what it encompasses because sometimes frankly, you don't know what a project encompasses until you really start to look at it in a real detailed way. So I hope that answered the question.
So one thing, and I know I requested this last year, but I think it would be helpful maybe if the board could actually see those schools and how they're ranked with the index and the educational...
The educational adequacy.
Right, I'm trying to, I know the acronyms, I'm trying not to. Would the board like to see?
That would be helpful to me.
Okay.
So thank you again for the question. I'm going to pick up now from years 1 and 2 being really deferred maintenance bonds to year 3, 2021, which really, in this proposal, marks a bit of a strategic shift based on the premise that the state restores debt reimbursement. And as we understand, it will be for 50% for capital maintenance projects, 40% for new construction or renewals.
Donlin?
You said, "as we understand"? Where's that understanding come from?
This would be from deed.
So you're saying that the Department of Education is telling you what a legislature is going to do two years from now?
Yeah, this is, I haven't heard from deed to report to me. So it would be the legislature that stopped the program and the legislature would put it back in. So did the Capitol and deed share that that was what they were doing?
Well, thank you for the question. As we understand, this moratorium, unless the legislature acts, will sunset on the 30th of June in 2020. At which point, again, I'll verify the numbers. We are understanding that if debt reimbursement is allowed to resume, it will be at a lesser percentage and what the district has had historically, it's either been 60, 40, or 70, 30.
And what is the basis for the lesser percentage? I mean, if it's a moratorium, wouldn't the old standard go back into effect? What makes us think it's going to be less or if it does happen?
I've not seen anything written. It's been anecdotal. So it may, it may not. That's what we are believing it could be reinstated at.
Well, even if you heard something, I mean, it's, we take an act of the legislature and it's, we don't even know who's in the legislature for next year, let alone two years from now. Okay.
Ms. Mitchell?
So I'm curious, Dave, I mean, I agree with you, there's no way to predict that. So are you suggesting that these guys make the assumption that it reverts back to what it was? It sounds like they're trying to be a little bit more conservative, but, or what? How would you propose that they move forward?
Well, my personal opinion is that we don't design a plan based on something that we don't know if it's going to happen or not. But I'm perplexed at how we would, if this is something that came from deed, folks down in Juneau that work for the Department of Education anticipating what a legislature will do in several years from now, that's just very, very speculative. I mean incredibly speculative.
So my concern would be that we do this and then we don't get that reimbursement reinstated. Do we have a Plan B or something else that will be presented?
Thank you for the question. The thing about the six-year capital improvement plan is that every year, the district would come back to the board with the recommendation. And if the indications are that this doesn't happen or that the legislature has communicated that it will not reinstate, when this decision sunsets, then the board has the option to reevaluate and make decisions.
For the purposes of the CIP, it really is a planning document at the state level so that they could know what perhaps could come to the future. But when we've had natural disasters ruin our buildings, whether it was the earthquake, we've had a fire in a building, those items are brought back to the board. Well, actually, prior to this time, the board didn't approve. Now that the board approves, that's a new provision indeed. It was simply reviewed by the board and I believe now it's approved. Is that right? Does the board approve the CIP now? In the past, it was, yeah.
The board does for the capital improvement plan.
But if it was in the middle of the year and something happened that we needed to change this, even in the middle of the year, you can send notice. And so the board has the ultimate decision-making. And this certainly is with the best information that we have about when the first time could, you know, we could have bond debt reimbursement reinstated, no matter what level, would be that two years out, so.
Tom, please proceed.
Thank you. So again, in 2021, year 3, again, what the administration is proposing as a part of the plan is a multi-year bond, a two-year bond. And that the expenditures of this two-year bond would be carried out over a two-year period. In the second year, the district would not go forward with the recommendation for a bond proposal on the 2022 ballot. But as a result of that, the amount for the single two-year bond would be a larger amount. But again, if you look at it in terms of a two-year expenditure over time, the amounts are fairly commensurate to what we are doing currently. There is some moderate debt increase is represented in both 2021 and 2023. So in 2021, what the district is proposing is that we bond for replacement of Abbott Loop and Inlet View Elementary School. Also, that we would plan for money for renovation to Wonder Park Elementary and Romig Middle School. So this would be planning and design money for the renovation of both those schools. These are carryover projects from the current six-year plan. And then you'll see there's a significant investment proposed for deferred maintenance and deferred capital maintenance for both roofs, or actually for all roof replacement projects. Moving forward to year 2023, year 5, the district is proposing planning and design money for Whaley School, a replacement facility, that we would bond for the renovation of Wonder Park and Romig Middle School and that we would have a multiple projects, again, on the bond for deferred capital maintenance. At this time, I'm going to pause for any questions or comments from the board.
Ms. Mitchell?
So I know when we met to review this initially, you talked about the fact that it is really inefficient to just do things on a year-by-year basis because we get the bond approved in April, hopefully if it's successful, and then you're trying to get bids out and get work done that summer and many of the contractors are already busy and we don't, it's rushed. We don't get the best pricing. We don't benefit from being able to do multi-year planning. And so I definitely like going to two years. And I am wondering, that still poses the issue that, you know, in the first year of the two-year cycle, you're still going through that whole cycle, right? So does it make sense to do three years or is that just too much? Do you feel like, start with this and see how the public reacts and maybe reevaluate later? Because if we did three years, it would only be a third of the time that we're in the situation where we're, we just got something approved and we're trying to get it going that summer.
I'll just, I'll take that in a couple of pieces. So you mentioned first what you perceive or what you said were advantages to multi-year bonding. I would offer, just as an observation, when we talk year-to-year bonds, what that really does drive the district and the administration too is really just a continuation of deferred capital maintenance. That it's very difficult to look beyond that and to look at the potential for other more significant investments to include replacement of schools. That's an observation. The multi-year bond does, I believe, give contractors greater confidence. If the public were to approve a multi-year bond that funding is available over a longer period of time, that they're willing to take risk that they may not be willing to take on single-year bonds, particularly when what we're talking about in planning and design and then construction. So there are efficiencies there and as Member Mitchell mentioned, there are optimal windows of time to submit projects out for RFP. In that the current timeline, if you look at an April bond cycle or election, if you're planning to initiate construction that calendar year, you're putting your RFP on the street when most contractors frankly have already filled the dance card. And because of that, you're likely going to get a higher bids back. So multi-year bonding does give you that advantage of timing and planning. The last piece, three years, real quick, is, we haven't proposed it because this is not something that has been done, to my knowledge, and three years may be a stretch that would be too difficult for the public to accept.
Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, and I would like to just let us know that Tom is correct. In the highlight of the bill that was passed, what the highlights of the bill, it prohibits the bond reimbursement and grant review. And it doesn't allow deed, but also, these are the numbers. This must be where Tom got them. They are but in the bill, it says reduces school construction and maintenance bond debt reimbursement from a range of 60 to 70% to a range of 40 to 50% for bonds and debts approved beginning July 1, 2020. So it actually does have that provision put in, in the law that created the hiatus or the moratorium. So that is where Tom got his numbers, right from the bill itself.
So my question is, on these schools, on Inlet and Abbott Loop, where do they rank on our most neediest schools?
He got those numbers available, Tom.
They're one of the highest.
One of the highest, but are there ones?
They're one of the highest.
Okay, are there ones that are higher than them?
No.
Okay, and are we basing Abbott Loop off of the projections from the Muni for 2040? What they're talking about as far as growth and where they, because, you know, we have that all in our reports and everything and I just want to know if that's, are we, is that's what's leading us to put Abbott Loop up to the front?
I would say that absolutely is a factor in the recommendation. And I have Mr. Shannon Bingham on the line, he can also talk to it. But Abbott Loop is surrounded by several very vibrant neighborhoods where it's expected that that is going to continue to grow over time. So to answer your question, yes, that is one of the areas that the city long-range planners do see, further urban growth. But also, you mentioned the facility condition index. You know, Abbott Loop is one of the highest numbers, but you know, that school built in 1958 just has so many limitations to it, it's almost more expensive to continue to invest in it, to keep it alive than it would be simply to build now.
I'd like to see the top 10 schools.
Sure.
Ms. Hildy?
Thank you. And I know the Western demographic study only came back with one school closure recommendation, but looking even at the 2017 utilization, you know, I don't want to say basic math, it's very complex, but it suggests that there would be room to close more schools. And I am wondering, you know, certainly I know you've looked at it in the past on how it would affect our funding, having fewer buildings reduces our state funding. So I know that part, but I would have to bring this bond to the public and say, "we want to build a new school at Inlet View, which isn't going to address capacity issues", when I still have overcapacity at other schools.
So that's a great, great observation and comment. And factually, I don't disagree. What I would submit, and Shannon, if you want, you can add to this conversation, but you know, whoever planned, I guess as a general comment, whoever planned the city's growth and placed elementary schools throughout the city of Anchorage really understood what they were doing. So even though you can look at, in the macro sense, that the district absolutely has more capacity than it has students and that the trend in population has gone down. I mean, I would say that's episodic. We don't know what truth will be five, 10 years from now. I know what the planners say. But to close a school has not just, you know, the capacity reduction, it has the geographic implications for those neighborhoods that are immediately impacted by it. And Inlet View is a school that's been discussed quite a bit. But I think, as the board probably picked up from the PTA president who spoke tonight, I mean, that is a, that is a community that absolutely, they live for that school, what it provides to their community. So you can't really separate these discussions from just reducing capacity to what it would mean, in my mind, to the communities that populate or provide kids to the program.
Would it be possible to see what that might look like if we had two or three more?
Would it be possible to see what that might look like if we had two or three more closures or consolidations? You know, I know that's not popular, but I need to keep teachers in the classroom and
Well, one of the things, that's the reason I wanted the update to the capacity study, is because with the loss of students that we've had, the one we're looking at that you've provided us in our non-action items is really not up to date at this point. So I think it's important for us to take a look at that, too, if we can get it updated. Because right now, it shows Abbott Loop at 66%. I don't know, it's got Inlet View at 142. So I think for us to make a good decision, we need to know what those numbers look like currently.
Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
And Inlet View at 142% of capacity is, I think, misleading because there's like 150 of the students are coming there from other areas of town. So if it was actually just the students that come from that neighborhood, it would be almost exactly what it's designed for, if I remember from the last discussion we had. So we have to keep that in mind, or it's kind of a self-created overcapacity there by allowing that.
Any other board questions? Yes, Ms. Bishop, Dr. Bishop?
Yeah. Tina, I would, I mean, all of, we're talking numbers and schools and, but we just had two presentations to create special schools inside of schools to attract people to ASD. We have always valued neighborhood schools, as well as always valued, I think it's in our DNA, valuing differences and specialty schools or special mission, like this has a special mission to this school. And I don't believe in the long run, in the planning, that losing a neighborhood school where even 60% is capacity, in the long run, is going to be a savings to the district. And the significance of the one school that's being proposed is tremendous. It's going to be a major decision. There were other schools mentioned throughout this. In fact, I'll share that one of the recommendations for where you could bus people out, interestingly enough, that came up on the draft, was O'Malley, because of the under-enrollment of O'Malley. And now we're talking about placing, you know, to build the capacity in that school's a special program. I am definitely a component of build it and they will come, build the kinds of programs that people want, but I don't necessarily think that the savings to our community in tax money would outweigh the opportunity cost for which our community has been accustomed to the type of education that their children want. I would just caution to put so much out there, because every time we do, it creates just unrest, and it takes apart from, you know, then we'll, apart from the teachers being able to teach and the, you know, families feeling secure in their school and not, I'm probably preaching the choir, but I don't know how far we want to go down to do this dance. I mean, the Western Demographics actually did a pretty extensive review. The data of the kids are really spread across grade levels, spread across the district. Interestingly enough, the base is where we're taking action, which did have a significant enrollment decrease, so we are adjusting that. If it is something that, yes, absolutely, we need to dig deeper, but the time, intense, we've been with this for a year and having the discussions and bringing them forward. So I mean, I'm probably not telling you anything, but it would, it would be a lot of investment and work to come back to, I don't know, I just want to know, does the board really want that because the energy in the room will just be zapped if we have a list, or maybe our greater community is asking us to do that? If that's the case, then I think it's our responsibility. But frankly, what I see in the greater community is to build programs in schools, we saw it tonight. So we're seeing things that are just imbalanced. So I don't know how to talk about it, but we hired someone who looked at our 20 years out, very professionally, very deliberately, and it's difficult to take that away and, you know, without all pieces of the information.
Ms. Hildy?
No, I agree with what you're saying, and I understand the stress it would cause if you, you know, said, oh, maybe this school, that would be extraordinarily stressful, and I don't know that that's what I'm perhaps suggesting, but what I see, so if you had the French immersion at O'Malley and you draw that to 100% capacity, that, those kids came from somewhere else, so now another school or other schools are lower capacity. At some point, if we start, you know, trying to build capacity at one school, those schools are going to continue to decline in capacity, where it might get to where it's 30 or 40% capacity. And at that point, I don't think we're responsibly using our resources unless, from our state funding standpoint, which I know you've looked at in the past, it would be more harmful. So perhaps not specifics, but maybe a numbers assessment on what would happen financially, and it might be very clear that it would cost too much. At that point, I can say, oh, Abbott Loop, maybe it's time for replacement. But it's very difficult for me to go into the community with these under-capacity numbers and suggest building a new school if I haven't at least seen what the financial implication's going to be.
And if Mr. Bingham is on the line and he'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Shannon.
I guess one thing I wanted to add is that if we were to take Abbott Loop and Inlet View offline, we'd create a void in a square mile, mile and a half square area, and I know that we're proposing also doing this on the base with a school on base, but in these market-driven housing markets, whenever you take a school offline and you create a void of that size, because families have to transport their children out of the immediate neighborhood, a lot of times they choose a non-public option. So I've probably closed 175 or 180 schools nationwide over the past 30 years, and the places where I've seen enrollment departure exacerbated is in areas where I've created those square miles, mile and a half square, or in the case of O'Malley, that would be almost nine square miles, where there's no school. And what happens is, those children leave the public system and it winds up costing us in the long run. So we experienced that en masse in Detroit public schools, with so many schools closing in individual years. And I guess with the average attendance area forecast to grow by about 30% according to the 2040 Anchorage build-out analysis, I would be really reluctant to create void neighborhoods where there's no school in Anchorage.
Thank you.
Any other? Any other comments from the board? Yes, Ms. Donnelly?
I guess another comment I'd make to the board is, instead of looking at a school in terms of low numbers and a possible closure or boundary or change or something like that, get creative with what we can do with it, whether it is, you know, a partnership with a preschool, you know, program, you know, that they can utilize space and help, you know, build education capacity a different way, whether it is offer it to some of our charter schools that struggle with paying rent and stuff like that. I think there's other things we can do besides going down a closure-type path.
And I would agree with that, but all of those things cost money, and I don't know how we put it in the budget to do the things we want to do and expand those schools right now. So I think everything that we have to consider, we have to consider what our revenue is and what our funding is, and, you know, where is that going to put us? And we really don't know from one year to the next, unless we can get some BSA permanent funding. So I think those are all things that we have to take into consideration as a board in being physically responsible. Do I want to close schools? No, but I want to have all the information I need to make the decisions I need to make. The other thing I would ask, and I know we had talked about greening a little bit, and I know that's not on here, and that's the question I had, because that's a school that was recommended also, and we don't have that on here, and I know we've been kicking around a little bit about making that a six through eight, and so I'm kind of wondering why that's not on here.
I can answer from a facility standpoint. So greening...
Greening.
Greening. Greening. Auf Deutsch, greening.
Greening. Yeah.
But greening is actually, it's not depicted on the six-year plan, it's part of the seven to 12-year plan. We believe we can sustain greening through that period of time, but it absolutely is on the plan, and Dr. Bishop has given the staff guidance to move forward on a six-eight.
And just so you know, the seminal idea that came about for the six-through-eight was from Eagle River Chugiac area principals who have an imbalanced number of combo classes in five and six, because one school out there is a six-through-eight and one is a seven-eight. And even schools that their matriculation is from an elementary school into greening, they will find that they'll have a fifth grader leave and go to sixth grade at Mirror Lake to come back to greening. And then some that don't have that option for a ride will stay there, which creates just a smaller class of sixth graders to where you can't have, sometimes it's difficult to have a full class. So it was suggested by one of the principals, actually Lisa Prince, the principal who is on the kayak committee, suggested, like anything else, why don't we test the waters to see what do our parents want? Would they choose having, because the buses go in that area, too, allowing for a lotteryed program at greening to allow so many kids in to see, are there any takers? Would they really, you know, would more capacity fill those schools? With that, we had other buildings also saying, now that's a great idea, from Hanshu to, I believe, Central. So we are going to design a choice program for sixth graders in middle schools that don't have sixth grade in middle school right now, about half of our middle schools do, and to test that out so that our parents can have, and the kids, can have that choice to see where that interest lies, and if we can narrow down the number of combo classes in some of our fifth and sixth grade, which our teachers find it difficult, so. But that was an idea, it's kind of getting ahead of ourselves because the planning isn't there, but it's a, it is actually to help balance out some of the schools that have a large sixth grade, or, you know, used to be a large two classrooms and then turned down to one, so then they have a combo and things like that, so.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And if there's other questions, Mr. Roth, would you like to proceed, please?
Through the president. Next slide, please. So just a very quick snapshot in time where we are on the 22nd of October, this is a non-action item. We are, again, planning to come forward to the board on the 5th of November, and these will be separate actions. The bond and the six-year plan will be separate board memorandums. Not to be presumptive, if the board does approve the bond, our intent is to move forward with the assembly, that it be brought forward for introduction on the 20th of November, and then the, for assembly action on the 4th of December. So that's our timeline. The CIP, we have more time, and I would offer it's probably better that we would present the CIP. Typically, we've done that in the February time period with the assembly. And I'll pause for questions. So I'd like to very quickly transition now, and Tom and I will kind of tag team on this. This is what the administration is proposing to the board for the 2019 bond proposition. The total amount that, our estimate is that this is for $49,859,000, which does fall below the anticipated debt retirement. So three planning and design projects, Abbott Loop and Inlet View, as we've discussed, also Chugiak High School has a rather aged roof, and we're thinking it's best that we get a sense for the scope and scale of this project through design. The other projects you'll see as you go down the list, Orion, Eagle River Elementary, Government Hill, all are in need of roof replacement, and I'm going to have Mr. Fenicev go through these specific projects here in a second. Bear Valley, we're looking to replace the domestic water system, it is on a well system. Continuing down, Taku, we're proposing a combination of restoration and replacement. What we're trying to do is get away from just doing strict replacement of roofs, and we have a contract with a company called Tremco, they've done evaluations, and what they are proposing for certain roofs is that we do restoration, which effectively extends the life of the roof at a much lower cost to the district. So Taku, we're proposing that. O'Malley and Homestead, we're proposing multiple safety improvements. Bay Shore Elementary for a boiler, and then Aurora, again, a combination roof restoration and a boiler replacement, and then an amount for deferred maintenance for the next year. And what I'm going to do, I'll pause again for questions, but Mr. Fenicev's going to talk to each of these projects in as much detail as the board wants to go into, there are some pictures, and then we understand the time constraint, at 6:30 minus a few minutes, we will absolutely stop talking.
So I do have a question, because I'm a little concerned about our deferred maintenance, and I know that we're at that point where deferred maintenance is rising, and we don't have, it's going to be more deferred maintenance than we'll be able to schedule out. So with the two-year bonding and with doing the construction, how does that put us in our deferred maintenance? I mean, is it, are we going to become even more backlogged?
I'll give you first chop at that, Tom.
Sure. So doing a multi-year bond allows us to plan out deferred maintenance. Best practices in the industry right now have it, where about 20%, you should be putting towards deferred requirements as part. Generally, you're going to put about 40% towards your replacement, your periodic renewals, about 20% goes towards your as-needed programs, and then another 20% goes towards your deferred maintenance requirements, and then the additional to meet the other capital program needs.
So what we're also looking at, on your chart, you'll note, for 2021 and 2023, the percentage that the district is proposing for those years, 35% towards deferred maintenance in 2021 and 60% for deferred maintenance in 2023. So that's consistent with what Mr. Fenicev's describing. But the other thing is what I'd offer, when you replace a school, Abbott Loop, as an example, has a pretty large deferred maintenance. By replacing a school, you're basically wiping out the deferred maintenance on that facility. You get the same effect on renovations as well.
You save money on operating costs on the long run. For example, both Abbott Loop and Inlet View in the last two years have had over 550 work orders. So that's significantly higher. So when you end up replacing a school, you have a much lower maintenance and operating cost during that initial portion.
Hildy?
Yeah, I just had two questions. One, a quick one, what is percent total deferred requirements, the percentages at the bottom of the long chart?
These are at the very bottom, two lines up. You see to the left, lower left, percent total deferred requirements, and then as you read along to the right, you'll see the percentage, which is the estimated amount that the district would be putting towards this backlog deferred maintenance of those respective bond years.
And then my other question is, you know, the difference in this proposed bond, as far as anticipated debt retirement versus the cost of the bond, is pretty significant. We'd be retiring a lot more than you'd be asking for. Is that trying to prepare people for a two-year bond, or is there a year-two bond that might, or a year-two project that might fit into year one and not have such a large gap? I don't see the community, you know, that big a difference.
Thank you, thank you for the question. That's a good observation, and it wasn't intentional that what the 2019 bond amount would be below 50, and we have kind of gone back and forth on several projects. But the other concern is that we are saturating the market with roofs, and that's the preponderance of the projects that we're proposing, that we may reach a point where we got more projects than we're able to... more projects than we're able to get contractors to do it in a timely way, that is. But we certainly could, if that's the Board's intent, we could look to bring projects forward.
Mr. Donnelly.
Multiple decades ago, the decision was made to try to save a lot of money for the taxpayers by adopting a certain number of established plans for elementary schools instead of recreating brand-new schools every couple of years, designing completely unique new schools. We saved a lot of money over those decades utilizing those existing plans. I think there was like five plans that were developed. I'm concerned that neither one of these schools that you're proposing here are going to fall under any of those existing plans because they're two-story proposed designs?
Yes.
Has there been any thought given, given to adopting some sort of universal two-story design for a K-through-eight and for an elementary school instead of just designing it uniquely for these sites to go ahead and have these designs available for any future schools?
Thank you for that. No, that is a, that is a great idea. We have not discussed that, but I think it would be a smart thing if we're going to look at, particularly in those sites where the site itself is small, that if we are looking to build multi-structured, two-story buildings, that we would have a standard.
Ms. Mitchell.
So you were probably involved with this, Tom. Last year or the year before, I think it was two years ago, maybe three years ago, the legislature looked at the uniform school design across the state, and what came back is that it really does not necessarily save money. Were you part of that discussion? I don't know if you, was it two years ago, three years ago, the legislature looked at that again? So it'd be interesting to pull that up, and I know it may be different in the ASD than it is across the state, but...
I am cognizant of the study that you referenced. I don't have it in front of me.
I was part of that team, and what you mentioned is correct, and that was primarily due to difference in weather conditions from southeast to Barrow or Utiavik. However, within Anchorage, it would be highly cost-effective, but it was really around those, the kinds of schools. A lot of Bush, Alaska is K-12 or smaller school, bigger gyms. So it was really what the community wanted, but primarily the differences in building was due to weather, which would not prohibit ASD from having a, or not be cost-effective for us here because of, our weather is our weather, so. But both you are correct.
So would we save money if we designed the exact same school for both locations?
Not necessarily, because each school has different requirements in terms of the population it serves. The educational specifications for the schools that we use are based on sizes for students and appropriated adjacencies for the different types of activities. We also have to consider the sites involved. Normally, for example, with an elementary school, we want up to 15 acres to do that. In the case of Abbott Loop, a smaller, smaller size, only nine acres, we have to either build up to get all the parking spaces. We have to also comply with newer requirements, Title 21, which involves the site layout, so...
Aren't they both going up? I mean, aren't they both going to be two stories?
Correct. They're both two stories, and they're both on very small footprints.
Right.
We could look into it. It doesn't necessarily mean always there's a savings, but we could certainly look into it.
Thank you.
So in the interest of time, I think we have about five minutes really to present, and we'll just go through these real quick. I think sometimes pictures do say a thousand words. So Tom, if you just kind of push through these real quick, and we'll close out for any questions from the Board.
Sure. So Abbott Loop is one of the schools we're proposing to replace. That would involve a two-story school to support a K-through-eight blended learning environment. One of the important things, too, is we'd be changing the orientation of the school, so it now would be oriented along 84th Avenue, and that would help with safety and the traffic that we get from Lake Otis. We've been looking at the school since 2006 to replace, so it's definitely moved up the list. And as I mentioned before, has quite a few work orders and needed requirements. Inlet View also, very small lot, but is also our most utilized school at 142%. So we can see the definite need for Inlet View. Also, we've been looking at since the early 2000s at replacing this school. So Chugiak is definitely in need of a roof replacement. It's had 16 work orders alone in the last two years. Orion is another one. Again, Orion is one of these inverted roof membrane assemblies. So it's an older system, and you can see from the pictures what type of condition it's deteriorated into. This is Eagle River's roof, again, an Irma-type replacement, and one of the difficult things about Irma roofs is because it's got those pavers on top, it's very difficult to find the leaks. You've got to take up all those pavers to find that layer underneath and where it's hit. So if you do something over the weekend, like a, you know, a temporary fix with some plastic up in the ceiling to maybe catch where it's leaking, you can have what happens on the right, is that's from a weekend of leaking. Government Hill, also same type of conditions, Irma-type roof. Bear Valley's on a well, so you can see the plumbing and the condition of that. Basically, Bear Valley needs all new plumbing. Now, O'Malley's safety improvements include things like ADA ramps, structural improvements to reduce some of the shear forces that happen during earthquakes, security upgrades, so moving those admin areas up closer to the buildings so they can potentially observe and stop intruders. And also includes replacing the boiler. Homestead also requires a number of safety improvements. These include the electrical systems, a standby generator, an intercom fire alarm upgrade, exit signs, and improvements to the kitchen area. Taku is one of our roof restorations. Now, the important thing about these is because it has an EPDM roof, which is essentially a thick rubber layer, your insulation is below that, so you can easily find leaks more easily. We're using newer insulation, and that layer is about 16 to 90 millimeters thick. So it's definitely a newer system, it's easier to maintain, and it also allows you to restore the roof layer, which is about 60% of the cost, giving you extended life rather than replacing it. So it really is a wise move for the district to move towards the EPDM.
Tom, can I stop you just for a second and ask, in these leaks that we're not able to identify right away, when they're, are we having mold issues?
Not to my knowledge. Aurora, another candidate for a partial roof replacement, but the main part of this project is to replace the border. One of the, and also one of the things on Aurora, it's had particular, its boiler has had quite a few problems in the last year, 19 boiler alarms in the last two years. Bay Shore is another one. This boiler is 27 years old, well past its life. So that includes a brief overview, pending your questions.
Thank you. I know that we're going to be bringing this up again in non-action items, so Board members, if you want to think about your questions, you'll have another opportunity to ask us a little bit later in the evening if that will work. Because at this time, I'd like to thank you for your presentation and all the work that you guys have done. It's very much appreciated. It helps us in making the decisions that we need to, and I'd like to move forward, and I believe are Denali recipients here. Ruth, are your staff here? Okay, okay. So let's go ahead and end this, and thank you again, and move forward.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. This is our second part of our focus on staff and students, and I do want to share with Denali that the police were here, APD was here a little earlier, but we want to take our time to really share our thanks for the, really for the professionalism and safety precautions of the Denali staff during a most recent incident. And if Principal Ruth Dean could come forward, if you're here, and we have a kindergarten TA, Alisira Espinoza Vargas, and Melissa Nazkiewicz, if she's here, Helen O'Hara, teacher in charge, Helen, and Felicia Woods, the school secretary, and Jennifer Hazen, the PTA president, is she here? She couldn't, she is in Italy, so I did get to meet her that day, as well as Ed, or Mr. Eddie, the BPO. Is Mr. Eddie here? No, okay. Well, please come forward. I want to just talk a little bit about these ladies. If there's anyone else who wasn't here earlier, Rob Holland or Kelly Cass, Stephen and Ashley, if you're still here, you can come forward again. And we did have Alicia. There she is, all right. So I wanted to share again the quick action of the Denali staff, and I shared earlier, when you weren't here, the story of what happened, that a person in the office, in the front office, had heard the alarm and the quick action of being able to hit, this lady right down here was the one who hit the school alarm right away, just with, her training went in, her mama bear training, and she hit that alarm, and truly that is, was a significant move in the safety of children, because as we know, the perpetrator did come to the door, and it was locked. Our safety precautions worked, and she quickly called, and the police were there within 90 seconds. I was able to visit after the incident with the staff, and of course, we planned for everything, so it was actually a teacher in charge who initially was able to lock down the school before the principal returned, and it was just fantastic, and the debriefing that went on with the staff was phenomenal. The deep care of children and care of each other came out through this incident, and while this was not something that we would have wished to have happened, it, the silver lining is that we have fantastic people in our schools, and the Denali Montessori staff are certainly at the top of that list, and so we just want to thank them, truly.
I would like to say that Alicia Woods did immediately, we have the safety precautions, we had that immediate alarm, that all she had to do was walk three feet perhaps to the push button that locked down our building. She immediately called the lockdown to the staff. Our teacher in charge, once her children were safe, took over for me in exemplary fashion. Felicia and Alicia and Jennifer Hazen, our president, answered phones, helped parents, comforted parents all day long. The security department, the crisis team, were there within 30 minutes. Melissa Nazkiewicz, our school psychologist, Janice Banta, who's sitting in the back there, our school counselor. As you can expect, some of the trauma took many, many days to unfold and to require support, and they were there every step of the way. The crisis team was there throughout the whole first week, and I am exceptionally proud of this team. Everything they did worked for the safety of our children, and that's the training that our security department has given us.
And I would say, when I came in the office, everybody in there was just cool, calm, and collected, like, we're good. And, but you knew that the day was heightened, it was a true emergency, but the calmness that you displayed assisted with everyone. At the end of the day, when school was released, you would have thought it was a regular school day, otherwise the kids were just going out a different door because they were running and playing and meeting up with their parents, so truly, they were taken care of. So thank you.
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of uncontested student hearings, negotiations, personnel, and litigation.
Work session is adjourned.